Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Dustin Swier.
Let us bow our heads and say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thou wilt be done on earth as it is now. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The pledge of the lead.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markcott.
Here.
Councilmember Marla Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Mark, uh, David Brusard. Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter. Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Public comment, can we have none? At this time, I'll ask you to please put your phone on vibrate or silent, just so we all remember, and we will move on to item number two.
Exclusions of the minutes of August 2nd, 2022, which will publish on August 19th, 2022.
Do you have a motion?
So move.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas, and I don't know who had the second, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on our minutes of August the 2nd? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Item three.
Resolution number 22-173, correcting resolution number 22-173 to reflect the approval of a contract for engineering services with Domeing Zabo and Associates, Inc. for services associated with Iberi Parish Seawish District, Number One, American Rescue Plan Act, Water Sector Program Project for Plant Free Improvement.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion on this item?
So what happened? I mean, I saw that, it sounds like we used the wrong project number or something?
Yes, yeah, we had a title wrong, Lainey? Would that be the right thing? Yeah, so because we had a title wrong, we brought it back. Nothing else changed except we had to, you know, what we discussed was right, but I know we-
It's a clerical error.
Yeah, just an error.
Okay, so I, but I do have one question. I'm reading through the contract.
Okay.
And if you look at, uh, Engineering Services Number Two, but it's on the second page, where it says, um, DSA will review shop drawings and submittals. Do we have someone who actually is, from our perspective, that's actually going to make sure that the work is done at the standard that we believe? Because they're not responsible for making sure that there are no material weaknesses or anything.
Well, they spec out the materials, okay? So they tell you what to do. The contractor sends in a submittal. Now, by Louisiana law, remember I'm a contractor, you can, you can substitute. You can put in an R equal, and you can submit it. But if they don't think it's equal, they say, no, it's not. And there are times you can exclusive say, no, this is the product I have to have. So they review those submittals, and the contractor has to do them. He has to do them in an autonomy manner, too, because it can affect the job, uh, schedule. So they send in submittals. The engineers themselves check them to make sure that it meets the specifications of what they put in. Then, during the project, the engineers go and inspect the work, because it's kind of a, not that someone would do that, but it's a double check, because what if they did a submittal, and then they turned around and didn't use the right scheduled pipe, or didn't use, you know, tried to some, put something in the ground, or, you know, in a building, that would be inferior. So they go and inspect. When it's our projec, I mean, we still get permits. We still have an inspection department.
Okay.
On some things. On the sewer, I don't think you, you don't expect the sewer, right?
Not in the plant.
Not in the plant, okay.
Not in the plant, no.
So, in the plant, no. But the engineers do, and Vince does. And we're very fortunate that we got a civil engineer who runs the sewer plant.
Okay.
So I feel like we have checks. But on all these projects, including our architectural projects, it works the same way. The architects are responsible, and they got their stamp on that, that they're, they're certifying what they designed is what we're doing, and that's why you have a submittal process.
Right. I get that. The contractors, however, they're actually doing the work.
Uh huh.
They're, they won't warrant their work, right?
Well, the general contractor, or the person who's the bidder on the job, has to warranty, by law.
No, I, I'm sorry, I meant, the engineers don't warrant the contractors.
Oh, no, no. We have a whole nother set of rules and laws that govern the contractor. But by state law, you are bound, and it will list all the different types of work, and how many years you're supposed to have a warranty for it, and that kind of thing.
Okay.
But the contractor is held responsible. It's the other reason that you hold retainage, too. Because never forget, we're holding retainage on a job. So if you hold 10%, it's a $10 million job, you got $1 million of their money. And that $1 million is held until they get their substantial completion, and then you have 45-day lien-free period to make sure that they paid their bills.
Right.
But at that time, too, like, I've had a project that something went wrong in the 45 days. Well, you know, the hammer was, they had my money, but they had my sub's money. The sub that messed up, I got to say, you want your retainage, and let's say it was, you know, $300,000, he ain't getting it until you fix X, Y, Z. Because I won't get mine to pay you.
Right.
So you have some checks and balances that, that are in our system.
Okay.
It's why we use all of those AIA contracts, and it's why we use all of those documents that are kind of proven nationally, because they do build in some protection. You know, don't ever think we're just winging it, that we just-
No, I don't think that.
You know.
I was just trying to understand. I know that what the general, the engineers are doing.
You gotta know the checks and balances.
Yeah, and so I'm just trying to figure out what's our check and balance when the contractor, because we don't, I'm not seeing anything from the contractor's perspective.
Right.
I'm just seeing what the engineers are saying.
Right. Engineers and architects police contractors. Contractors are supposed to police themselves, but the way the food chain goes, they approve it, they pay, you know, they, they down the pike a little bit, so.
Okay.
Anyway, but that's how it goes. And on other projects, there are many projects that, not the sewer plant, but on our construction projects, our permit office is another level of protection, because they go out and inspect everything.
Okay.
It's another reason I believe in the in-house permit office and not subbing it out to somebody, because we're here to protect, you know, the product we deliver.
Okay. Thank you.
Anytime. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, ma'am, that was for those rusted-out pipes and stuff that we saw that was in the ground, or, which project is this?
Let me look.
That's for the improvements on the plant.
On the plant?
Yes.
The plant, on 14?
Cotton Street.
Okay.
The Cotton Street plant.
Yeah, Cotton, on Cotton Street.
Yeah, Plant Three.
Not the one on 14.
Okay.
Right, the one we own and have with the parish. And it is all a bunch of improvements and, and infrastructure that is, you know, in need of repair.
So the $185 fee, that's, we only gonna need to pay 200, I'm sorry, 93,000?
We pay for the project, and then we get reimbursed.
Yeah, so.
And so it's half the cost, and they're supposed to pay half the cost.
Right.
But we spend the money, and then they reimburse us.
Okay.
And we have a, I was talking to Kevin about that, I think, the other day. Uh, we were in budget, and we were talking about, I said, what system do I have to make sure I get my money back? You know? And we had a discussion about that today, just to make sure, because that's not something we ever really, you know, Vince runs the department, Vince handles a lot of that. Vince is leaving in 13 months, and if he was here, he'd tell you that. So, uh, I wanted to make sure that we were getting our half back, but we have a good process of tracking that.
Okay, but ultimately, we're only paying 93,000 once we get our reimbursement.
Does it need change orders?
Yeah, now, if there's some change orders, we could be paying more. You know, that famous word, change order. I mean, if we spend more, whatever we spend at the end of this project, we're paying for half. I'd rather tell it to you like that.
Okay.
I don't want to put myself in a box, because we could spend more than that.
No, I get it.
Okay.
I'm just double-checking.
Don't box it, Nick.
Good, cotton street plant, I don't know.
Okay. Good. Then if there's nothing further, I ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you.
Maybe I need to put this back on.
Three B.
Resolution number 22-182, declaring various wastewater equipment slash property as surplus property, and further authorizing their disposal.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion on this junk? I mean, item.
So we're just gonna trash it? We're not selling it to anyone?
Yes, it's, it's, it's bad. And Vince is kind of a scrounge. So if he says it's bad, I think it's bad, I mean.
Okay.
I've gone behind him and tried to say, no, I can reuse stuff, and in five and a half years, I haven't found anything good.
Okay.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you again. Madam Clerk, three C.
Resolution number 22-183, authorizing the mayor to execute an independent contractor service agreement with Maxine V. Gonsalas for professional services to the city of New Iberia.
Do you have a motion?
So motion.
Motion by the Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. And Maxine is here tonight.
So what is she gonna be doing?
Maxine is going to help Jimmy with compliance, okay? Because since Liz retired, Jimmy, you know, needs some help. We are, have the position posted. It's a civil service position. We all know that civil service takes a while to fill a spot. So what that did to us as a council, we've been very aggressive with demos, with grass cutting. We've been on a roll, if y'all, not that y'all haven't noticed, y'all been on the ride with us. Well, the train's coming to an end for a while, because we, we don't have anybody to process all that. We don't have anybody, Jimmy can, Jimmy's out doing inspections, Jimmy's out in the field. We don't have anybody to do that. So Maxine came to mind, because she was our clerk, and I worked with her, she did a very good job. And so we started thinking about it. She already knows the process. She knows the clerk in, but she knows programs. She's very process-oriented, I can tell you. So I called Jeff first, and said, Jeff, what you think? You think I could call, what do you think if Maxine could come back and maybe handle that, if she'd be willing? Because she does things as an independent contractor. I called Jimmy, and all I got was thumbs up everywhere. So then I called Maxine, and she said, you know, yeah, I could, I could help y'all out. So that's the reason for this, is that this would help us with keeping our compliance stuff moving.
And this work is gonna be done remotely? Or is she gonna be in the office?
Uh.
In the office.
In the office.
Okay.
Okay, all right, because we, we had talked about either way.
But for now, in the office, about two days a week.
Okay.
Is what I can give.
Okay.
Cool.
Sounds good. Welcome aboard.
Welcome back.
And welcome back.
Anybody have any?
I didn't know, or so.
Yeah, no, I know that, I know that. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
One comment. Jeff, I already did my research. Relationship's not close enough for me to abstain. Just want to make sure, for the record.
Okay.
Not related at all.
For the record.
Okay, thank you.
So it's not close enough?
Yeah, for me to abstain.
Okay.
No, I just wanted to say, we might need to put in non-appropriation clause, like we do in most contracts.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, no, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I do too.
Well, no, the greater, the good thing is that the ball don't stop rolling.
Right, right. And I got somebody I know that I could, that we can all trust, somebody I work with, I mean.
And, and it's probably the office that gets the most calls, Maxine.
I, I talked to Jim, and Jim seemed like he was terrified when he didn't have his help.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, he-
Glad you got help, Jim.
He definitely lost his right hand, so.
When did she retire?
Uh, August 5th. She put a two-week, two-week notice in, and was gone in two weeks.
Oh, okay.
Got a job offer she couldn't pass up, and could collect her retirement at a young age, and just, I mean, it all worked for her. She's, uh, enjoying her time with her daughter. It all worked out. It just, I, you can't blame her. What she got was, you know, a really good opportunity.
Oh, great.
And she, look, she worked for us for 29 years. Did a great job. I mean, was here from when she was 17. I mean, you can't ask for a, a better worker, a better person. I mean, that, that, that was awesome.
Yeah.
So everybody gotta go sometime, you know?
Yep.
So, um.
Yes, sir.
Other than the two days, can we call you?
Uh, sure.
I would've said no.
So I, the only other thing I would say is that I don't see an overtime rate in the contract. I know she said two days, but, you know.
Well, she's an independent contractor, so if she says she's giving me two days, that's what she's giving, you know, in other words.
Well, you, if that changes you.
It'll be by the hour.
Yeah.
It'll be by the hour, and I'll keep track of my time.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm saying, if it goes over 40, you might want to renegotiate and get an overtime rate.
I don't need it to go over 40.
I know, I mean, Liz works 40 hours a week.
Well, I know she's got other clients, so I don't want to, I don't want to kill her.
Okay.
Let's not, let's not scare her off.
I, I have other obligations.
Okay.
Well, thank you for stepping up, because word on the street is Mr. Jimmy was very busy. He always is, so I'm glad that he has somebody to help out. Thank you.
Well, thank, you're welcome.
Anything further? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you, thank you, Max. Appreciate it.
Welcome back.
All right, four A.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2022-18, and ordinance amending and reenacting Section 58-56 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia, Louisiana, regarding the curfew for minors within the city limits of New Iberia, and to set for public hearing on September 6th, 2022.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marla Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion on this item?
Is anything changing?
Well, it's going to 18. The state changed the requirement to 18, so we want our rules to follow suit. So instead of 17 is a juvenile, it's 18, and so we had to do the same thing.
Okay. I was reading, and I thought that's what it was already, for some reason, but, okay, good to know.
So I just have a couple of questions about the actual ordinance itself. This is my first time, like, having a chance to talk about this, but.
Okay.
Couple of things. We have jail time on these things. For each one of these, you know, violations, I think we have up to three violations. That seems harsh to me, for a kid. I mean, what about school? We're talking about kids 18 and under, that means they go to school. So they could potentially go to jail for this?
I'm pretty sure that we follow, we follow-
State statute.
Yeah, we follow state statute.
Yeah.
You can go to almost jail for anything.
Right.
I know, but I'm saying, this is, this is-
I'm not saying that it happens.
This is a curfew.
I know.
It seems excessive and harsh to me.
Is it the officer's discretion as to if they go to jail or not?
No, he gotta go in front of the judge.
Well, no, I mean, at that point of, at that point of arrest, or whatever.
Ops always have discretion. In their role, they have discretion. If they do not want to cite a juvenile for a curfew, they don't. If they want to send them home, if they want to, you know, follow them home, whatever, but an officer has, you know, some discretion. You couldn't trust an officer if they didn't have any, you know, I mean, you, you put these people in a lot, in a position of power, with a badge and a gun, we, you, that's why you are very selective about who you hire, and they should have some discretion. So they have discretion in, you know, many instances. They don't always give a ticket, you know? Sometimes a cop gives a warning. So the same thing with this. I mean, we haven't been flooded with juveniles going to jail for curfew, but the law has always been. All we doing in this is changing the age, because the state changed the age. Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, the only question tonight is, do you change the age from 17 to 18?
Right.
Because if you vote yes, you have the rest of it. If you vote no, you still got the rest of it.
Yeah, because it's still in place.
If there're questions about it, maybe it's a conversation that ought to be had with the prosecutor, who's the one who really knows this.
Yes, you're right.
And, and is very good. So, you know, I think maybe, maybe talking about the rest of it, you know, we have an ordinance group that meets, there are other ways to do it, but I'm sure she would talk about why this works or doesn't work. But tonight, it's 17 or 18, that's really the only question.
Huh?
Okay, that may be the only question, but it is the whole ordinance in front of me, okay? So I have a right to question it.
No, no, you do, you do.
Yeah, yeah.
So all I'm saying is, and maybe the ordinance committee needs to revisit this, because even if it's a state statute, we don't have to match it to the point where we give them, you know, five days in jail for being out late one night, get caught the first offense. I mean, that's basically what this thing is saying. I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's too harsh. I mean, come on, we're talking about curfew. You see if they got caught stealing or something, but this is a curfew. So maybe.
Yeah.
I know Deidre's not here, so, um, but this is one I'd love for us to bring back up to the ordinance committee to kind of rethink.
Okay, well, Nicole, our prosecutor is part of the ordinance committee, so it works, you know? And I don't know if it, like I said, somebody might-
Can I come and talk to the ordinance committee? I know we're not, we haven't been allowed to go to the meetings.
Yeah, it's not really a committee, okay? It doesn't function as a committee. We have an ordinance meeting. So the only thing, you're welcome to come. But you can't have, I can't have more than three council people, or I'm breaking the sunshine laws, which I'm not gonna do. But it's not even really a committee. We have a meeting once a month, and we talk about the ordinances, and we work on them with a whole diverse group of people, and we bring them here as a suggestion, you know, to work on. But it's not a meeting. Yes, Jeff?
I hope you'll attend.
Hmm?
I'd like to have you, then.
I'd love to attend.
Well, you can, you can. We just can't have more. And if anybody has something they're passionate about, you know, like you are on this, we welcome it. But it, like I said, we just have to watch the sunshine laws, number one, and number two, we don't really call it a committee anymore, we just call it a meeting, because that would bring in a whole lot of other steps that, the way we do it is kind of loose and easy, and people float in and out, and, you know, the clerk comes, the city prosecutor comes, planning and zoning comes when she can. Jeff attends. Sometimes, you know, Jimmy's attended, if it was something that had to do with him. So, yeah, the more the merrier, if you ask me. But I agree with Jeff that for tonight, we just vote in 17 to 18, and then we can take this up and discuss it, you know, at another time.
And I hope we will.
Yeah, and I don't mind doing it.
Okay.
At all. I mean, you know, I'll discuss anything. Okay, wait, you still, you still have the floor, is it?
I'm done.
Okay, okay.
I just wanted to just point out, and also for the public, I know it says 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM on the weekdays, but on the weekends, it's 12, it's 12:00 AM to 5:00 AM. So I know some people ask questions about that as well. Um, and also on here, so any other adult person, so any person above the age of 17, say there's a 19-year-old in the vehicle, and they're coming back from going out or having a good time, and there's a 17-year-old, that 19-year-old, that 17-year-old cannot be sighted, or, or anything like that, if there's an older person, even though it's not a guardian or parent, right?
And that's to discuss the ordinance committee.
I don't know that, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
You're saying because the 19-year-olds there, they have an adult with them?
Correct.
So they're supervised.
So how, how does that?
I'm not sure. I don't, I don't, I don't know if that's a chaperone or not.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I don't know how that works.
That would be a cha, that would be considered like a chaperone?
It might be, you know? Because if it's a parrot or something, you find, but if it's-
Right, is it parrot, guardian?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't know about-
Other adult person having the care and custody of the minor.
Yeah, I think, I don't know that you can just say-
A 19-year-old might not have the care and custody of the minor.
Yeah.
I, I think, yeah.
Again, but we're getting off on the weeds, and that's more of a, that's more of a Nicole City Prosecutor question.
I think, I think she would tell you that means something, care and custody. It's not just hanging around with somebody who's a year older.
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay, so just invite me to the next meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Got it. Anybody else? Dustin, you still have the floor. You're done. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Lady, make a note to invite her to the next meeting. All right, four B.
Introduction of special ordinance number twenty-two-one dash twenty-two-two dash ten, and ordinance amending the budget to reflect fund allocation to City of New Iberia Civic Center Marina, phases one and two, F P N C number sixteen dash oh-one dash zero-zero dash eight-six dash zero-six slash F dot one-six-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-five-six, phase one, and F one si, ooh, F dot one-six-zero-zero-zero-one-six-one, phase two, and new Iberia C V A pump-out grant amendment two, purchase order number two-zero-zero-zero-three-zero-three-one-oh-six, and to set for public hearing on September sixth, twenty-twenty-two.
Good job. Uh, I need a motion, so move.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncelad and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Next time, I'll put more numbers. Do we have any discussion on this item?
So we're just doing a budget amendment to,
Yes.
cover the cost, the additional costs.
Job that we did the budget on three years ago. We got the grant money, and between the core and all of the steps from the funding agent, it has taken this long. So, you know, I, I knew our prices would be up.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's what we're doing, is this is a budget adjustment.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. All right. Property standards. Hello, Jimmy. Madam Clerk, five A.
Public hearing in action. Resolution number twenty-two dash one eighty-four, on the state of buildings located at eight oh-nine Edna Street, District Five, per resolution twenty-two dash one fifty-two, as noticed and advertised on July sixth, twenty-twenty-two.
Great. You, you pull them up. Is this one you got to pull up?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Eight oh-nine Edna.
There you go.
Yeah, that's it. All right. Jimmy?
All right, electrical to plumbing, front porch to sod, all that needed to be repaired. We sent letters. This is one of the ones that we had trouble with, with the service. And with Joe Burke.
Yeah, yeah, we had to advertise and everything.
Yeah.
But we did all of that.
We, yeah, everything's good now.
Okay. That's your district, right?
Yep, that's my district, and I say that we go with option one, proceed with demolition.
Okay. All right.
That's my motion, yes.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilwoman Marla Lewis. Is there any further discussion on this property?
I have a question, just in general, about demolition.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to approve to demolish this, it looks like. How much longer until it's actually torn down?
Well, there's a process.
Okay.
Jimmy?
I got, I got,
Give us the process.
They got a certain amount of time.
Tell us why you need Maxine.
They have a certain amount of time to appeal, so you have to give them that timeframe.
How long is that?
Uh,
It's five days. We have to give them notice, and sometimes there are problems with delivery of the notice. It takes time.
Okay. So if I have a,
Then they can appeal, and it can, you know, that, then it's in court. It can take a long time.
Yeah, and give us our next steps.
Then I have asbestos testing.
Yep.
Yep.
Got to wait for that to come back, and if there's, there's asbestos.
That one has asbestos.
We know.
Asbestos, yes.
So they have to abate all of that. Then while, while they doing that, we getting bids from the contractors. So when they're finished doing their abatement, we can go in and have the contractor tear it down.
Okay, gotcha.
I'm working on a bunch of them right now. He's got four, five, maybe six that he's tearing down right now. He just, he ought to be about finished the one on, uh, on Providence across from the school.
Excellent. That's my district, yeah. And what about the two in Walton?
Uh, I think he's going there next.
Excellent, okay.
What about the one with the four-foot raccoon?
Which one was that?
Saint Peter? Saint Peter and, uh,
I'll, I'll talk to you. I'm, I'm happy to talk about these after the meeting. I don't want to take a tour of the tour of homes of New Iberia.
Someone was asking in particular about that home, like, how much longer
Yeah.
do they have to live next door to that situation, so, yeah. I'm sure that's a lot of people in the city, though.
Yeah, it is, it is. And you got to follow this process.
Right.
We are challenged, and the reason we succeed is that we take our time and follow all the steps.
Okay.
Got six of them in court right now.
Yeah, I was being nice. We've got six of them in court right now.
We're doing, doing fine.
Good to know.
Yep. Anybody else on this property?
Yeah, Jimmy, just roughly, what's the least amount of time you've seen a home demolished? From our, from getting it to, from us, you know, ordering to be demolished to the finished product, what's the least amount of time you've seen? All right, uh, the one on Providence had no holdups, and that was done in May. Okay. It was set to demolish. Set to, okay. And we just demolished it this week.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's,
So about ninety days?
Yeah, that would be the fastest.
Yeah.
But it depends, though, right? I've seen some a year.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. No, and if they challenge us in court, yeah, we could be taught it for a long time.
Revisit, it just depends.
The quickest one of the people that were here that we need to give awards to that tore them down themselves.
Yes.
A couple of people came, and they came back a month later, and the house was down, but they did that themselves.
But I'll comment on that. If they tear them down themselves, you see, when I go in, if there's a storage shed on it, I tear the storage shed and everything. But if they tear it down themselves, and they don't tear the storage shed down, then we have a problem.
Right.
Okay.
Well,
So. And just for the record, what's, what's the problem with the storage shed? Uh, vagrants. Okay, stealing, okay.
Large snakes.
Okay. I thought it was a, another le, a legal problem, like, okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Then we got a motion and a second. Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right, five B.
Public hearing in action. Resolution number twenty-two dash one eighty-five, on the state of buildings located at eight oh-eight Lombard Street, District Two, per resolution number twenty-two dash one fifty-three, as noticed and advertised on July sixth, twenty-twenty-two.
All right. All right, Jimmy?
Okay, it's, that's all falling down. Uh, the roof, the structure, the maintenance, uh, plumbing and electrical, all that needs to be repaired. It's falling down.
Okay. Councilman Lewis, that's your district?
Yes. Look, I, I talked to every family member that I can possibly reach. They actually, they, they actually my family, and all of them pretty much took their hands off of it. The old man whose house it was for was my grandfather's first cousin. He's been gone a long time. His wife has been gone, his little cutting Daisy. I mean, it's just, you know, there's no one in the family that wants the house, you know, so I make a motion to demolish it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Marla Lewis and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncelad to demolish. Is there any other discussion? Hearing seen none. Please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. All right. Item six, councilman's remarks. Uh, Councilwoman Markcott.
Um, so school is back in session, I think, for pretty much everyone except for maybe pre-K and kindergarten. Um, so I just want to ask the citizens to pay attention to school zones, watch your speed. Um, I've already been in touch with the P D, and, uh, they're monitoring those school zones as much as they can, so just watch your speed, be careful. You don't want to hit a child. Uh, it's just, a few minutes extra on your travel time, it's worth it. Uh, and I think that's all I have for tonight.
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mayor, uh, we did, uh, cuts for kids. Uh, we did it, actually did it two weekends in a row. We did one at, uh, Cliff's Impressive Cuts. We did another one at, uh, a shop called Chop Shop this, this, this weekend passed. So we kind of gave back as much as we could to the community for, um, you know, as far as haircuts go, getting those kids ready, uh, also school supplies and so forth, but, uh, man, as always, I try to make myself available all year long for any parent that, uh, may need an assistance to, to get their kid going, because some of them can't even get a ride to the event where they're giving away the stuff, so. Man, as always, you can find me at seven thirty-four Lombard Street, and my address, my phone number is three-three-seven-five-seven-seven-three-four-four-eight. If I can't help, I'll definitely point you in the right direction, and I ditto everything you say, Brooke.
Thank you very much.
Good job. So, um, yeah, just to echo some of the school stuff's going on, but, uh, if we, if we walk, if we go around our community and we hear, you know, what people are saying, how we improving things around our community and working, I use the indicator at the tax collection that we got in our packet, and I see a healthy tax collection in our community, so it shows me a community that's growing and prospering, not maybe, maybe not like we all should see it, but we are prospering, and we are moving in the right direction, so I think, uh, if we study the sales tax collection, you should be proud of the work we doing, because we showing some good numbers.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I want to kind of also reiterate what Brooke said. I mean, I want to remind people that live near Peson Elementary that we have new sidewalks. So you don't have to drive around the corner. You could actually let your kid walk to school. And so, um, you know, and I continue utilizing the sidewalks. We're really excited about, um, you know, having those sidewalks available for the kids to have a safer route to school. I will say that I was walking this morning, and I saw a couple of young men walking down Jefferson Terrace, uh, on the sidewalk going to senior high, so that was really cool. They had a safer route to school as well. Um, the other thing is, I want to thank everyone who came out, uh, last Saturday for the D N A, Downtown Neighborhood Association, uh, back-to-school giveaway. It was a fun day for the kids, and they also gave away a lot of school supplies, so thank you all, uh, for coming out, uh, and, um, you know, being part of the community, and I want to thank the city for partnering with us on this event. We appreciate it.
Sure. Yes, sir.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right. Um, I want to be brief. Next meeting is September the sixth. Uh, remind our citizens to look at the MS four stuff online, and, uh, we still have adjudicated properties for sale on civicsource.com, and to tell the council, in the next few weeks, I'll be setting up budget meetings. It's that time of the year that we begin to review our budget for next year. That's coming. Kevin and I have been working hard on that, uh, and, and he and his staff, so we have a couple of more meetings, and then I'll get in contact with y'all so that we can set up our finance meetings. I have to publicize those. I have to make sure I give you everything forty-five days before we vote on it. Um, I do normally like to try to do it a little ahead of time, and not wait till, you know, it's due November one. I like to do it in October, so, uh, that'll be coming. Won't be long, and we'll be setting up, uh, meetings. Brooke and I had a conversation about that today. Won't be long that I'll start with the civic groups first, and then, once we finish the civic groups, we'll go around and do some town halls on the tax reassignment, if you will, where we realot a millage. It wouldn't be a new tax, but we would realot a millage so that we would have money for a permanent, a twenty-year road program. It won't cost any new money, but it's just a way to get more roads going. Um, I'll make one other remark that, uh, I, I get calls constantly still about the condition of our roads. You know, I don't know how else to remind people, go right around. We're spending twelve-point-five million right now on roads. We have many more to go. We're probably seventy-something days in a two-hundred-something day project. So you will continue to see road work throughout our community, uh, spread evenly through each district. We are hoping that when this millage is reallocated, that will give us millions more to immediately bond out and take another set of bids and keep going with roads. And my one little pet peeve is, uh, the sidewalks are wonderful. Remember, we didn't do a lot of sidewalks, and now we are. I'm putting new sidewalks in this year's budget. I want to continue looking for grants and continue for work on sidewalks, and it's pretty funny, because people, I got a letter this week that the man was upset that we weren't fixing the roads, but we were putting new sidewalks. And it made no sense to put sidewalks when we weren't fixing the roads. What do you do with that? I mean, the truth is, we fixing roads all over the place, and as a city with a budget our size, I'd just like to say we can do more than one thing at once. We can do, you know, multi-things.
Yeah.
And the beauty of this council has been that we hitting on all cylinders all over town with tons of projects. I'm about to put together, I told you I would be doing that, you know, recent, you know, on a regular basis, so as, while I'm doing the budget, I'm putting together a little presentation of projects. I'm going to show you where we've come from the, uh, fund balances. I'm going to go back to, I don't know, two thousand fifteen, something like that, and show you how we built the fund balances up continuously, show you how taxes have come up, show you the projects that we, I'm not going to rehash the projects we did in our last term, but just kind of an overview, and really talk about where we are with the projects that are coming, because I don't think people realize how much design time, how much preparation, how much setting up your own program takes to get it right before you start, but all of that legwork is coming together, so I think, uh, I'm excited for budget, because we're going to be funding a lot of new things. Um, we are even looking at raises for our employees. You know, it's time that you, you know, we're fixing the infrastructure, and, uh, that's good, but we are buying equipment. We got to take care of our people, too. So over the next few weeks, I think it's going to be exciting, because we're planning, you know, more success, and, you know, if you plan to fail, plan on failing. I don't plan on failing. So with your help, I think we're going to, uh, put some good stuff together the next couple of months. So with that, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you.